Meeting order. And looks like our first step is going to be approval of the agenda and meeting minutes. So I will call for any potential changes to the agenda or suggested changes to the meeting minutes. And if there are none, could I get a motion to approve the agenda and meeting minutes as they are in the packet?
This is Commissioner. To approve the agenda as published.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Phil, a second.
Thank you, Commissioners. I will do role Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pence.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
Commissioner Casillas.
Hi.
Commissioner Verling.
Hi.
And Commissioner Thel.
Hi.
Thank you Commissioners.
All right, that motion has passed, so we can move right on to staff reports as usual. Troy, you are first up.
You are muted, Troy.
How's that? Everybody here?
Yes, we can hear you.
Very good, thank you. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. So just taking some highlights from the report found in your packets from the Scotts County Staff Report. The first graph there shows the number of technical systems and question requests that staff are managing. You'll see the numbers right around the 150 mark for the month of October. And as you can tell from previous, it's kind of swayed a little bit. Around this time last year into spring, but it's kind of steadied off now since about February at that 140 to 150 mark. That's represented by the blue bars and the green bars represent a portion of those requests that are actual projects. And those are projects that are either being planned, designed, constructed, or maybe in the process of being paid and certified. So it's a good level to be at. We figure that's pretty sustainable when we look at or add into that. The cost share or the service requests we're dealing with with the manager of the county, which is around the 220, 230 level. So the cover crops. We completed the aerial seeding. We have done that for a number of years now. We had total 352 done with the aerial application. And we also had the two this year, the option to apply cover crops with something called Highways here. We did 169 acres there, so right around the 500 acre mark. The Highways that implement, you see on the field, has really tall wheels and it can like go over top of a car. That's how tall it is, but it's an anodeal drill, fairly tall corn and without ruining the crop. So it's just the option that we utilize this. So in addition to that, we received a couple new caution requests for cover crop in San Diego. With five landowners that actually rented our no-till drill to do their own cover crop seeding. And that's above and beyond the acres you see earlier there. And then we have one of the landowners applied for a soil health equipment grant. This is a new grant through the Department of Ag. That landowners as well as local units of government can apply for to get new equipment to help them do things like no-till and cover. The grant you see there is a recent addition to the report. It's basically showing you over the course of the last five or six years. How many acres of practices we've installed through the tax program specific to soil health. So that includes cover crops, mature management, and no-till or high residue management. Obviously, if you were approaching last year's level, we're at 1,250 acres so far this year. In our education program, so we hosted our ever-popular Health Education Day. That was September 25th through 29th. We had over 140 students from 15 schools across Scott County. So it's another great year. It's the first year that we utilize the the materials that were developed through a consultant that was funded by a WMO grant. From the 2021 Watership based implementation funding. So we utilize those funds to hire a consultant to basically update and refresh our curriculum to make sure it meets state standards. And also meets the higher demand of students in terms of interaction and engagement. So staff utilized the recommended new material and by all accounts, it was much improved here. So we have a few tweaks you want to do, of course, but overall, we're very happy with what the result was of that effort to update the material. And as many of you know, many of you know, we posted our annual conservation tour. I think we had 25 guests with 13 members who were following. And I just want to follow up with everybody who had attended that. We actually, you'll recall, we had awarded an assignment in family with the Conservationist of New Year Award. And we submitted his information to the statewide award program, the State Conservationist Award. And he was actually selected as area winner. So out of the 11 counties in the central or metro area. Took that prize. So he'll be going to the state manual convention. Who knows? Maybe he'll become, he selected as the state winner. For all the work that's done. Well, inventory assessment, so I continue to work on that project. We finished the hydroconditioning phase of the modeling tool, of the modeling tool. Remember, this is going to be in the Raven Creek's one. That's the part of Raven Creek that is not county ditch 10. The hydroconditioning phase was like the biggest hurdle. That's where you have to really compile all the data. And make sure all the water that's flowing is going in the right direction and is going through the colors and heading towards the opposed to. So that condition is finished and there's just a few steps before we complete the first run. And the results of that modeling are going to show us where practices in the landscape could be or should be placed. And it prioritizes them or helps prioritize them based on their cost effectiveness and who the people to move on. We hope to have a finished report to you all and to your staff by the end of the year. We moved down to native tree and seed myself. We have placed our order for next year's trees. It's 3,600 trees in trouble. We've reduced the total varieties from that, but kept the same number of trees as last year. We actually sold around 38,000. So looking forward to that. I worked in water quality. I tend to use a sampling, a bi-weekly sample. We had two regular bi-weekly samples. We were actually able to take one routine event sample. I think we had some other. As of the time of preparing this report, the private sixteen sites were dry where we were collecting picol and chloride. But don't worry, since then, those sites have regenerated and flow. So very good. That's good stuff. Aren't we late? But that's been challenging. So that's actually a project that we're contracted with the city of High Lake to be three years of the country out there. Looking for the second or third time, we've had to remove our equipment deeper into the lake because we just keep dropping lower and lower. As a result, equipment will have a one day or one. So all this evidence impact, that's for sure. Let's skip to the construction erosion control. This, the bar parts of this graph show the number of inspections. So you'll see the total number of inspections. And these are in all unincorporated areas of the county. Including in the WMO as well as other watershed areas, but it was slightly over 200 total inspections. For the month of September and then the purple line indicates now we're plan reviews that come in each month. It was right around the 10 to 15 mark. Getting down to invasive inoxion species management. So we held our spring inoxion sweet training. That was back on June 5th and we did prepare for the the fall, actual fall application. I got this wrong here in your report, but we we applied our second application of treatment this fall. And I don't know if any of you get a chance to drive around the roads of Scott County, but at least when we do, we notice a very, very promising trend and that is we're seeing left and left wild parsnip. You know, there are inoxious weeds out there. If you get a chance to notice that, maybe look at that along the roadside, especially through the partnerships. Compare that to other parts of the state where it basically is uncontrollable at this point, but the grass is a fan off, so we're looking to see very, looking very promising. Dante Equipment Rental Program. You'll see the number of acres there is topping 1,500. So that should be by the time we finish reporting and getting all these all cover crop seeding, then that number will be close to 2,000, if not well over. And I'll just run out by sharing some of the cost share application and grant information. There's seen within the WMO combining soil and water and WMO grants, we have a little over 920,000 awards out there and available. Of that is about 385. So we're well over spent most of it. So it's still a good chunk of money to, that's still available and that needs to be moved out there. And then running, I'll go into the tables. August, November time period. What you'll see there are those payments and new applications that were approved by the Stone Water Board since that August period. Just we had $30,224 in payments and new applications totaling about 75,700. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll try to ask questions if there are any.
Troy, I do have one question. Back up there where it says cost share dollars available. Right there. It says WMO, it says award 634, available 332, spent 48. But maybe I missed reading it. 634 looks like a bit more than 48%.
Maybe I didn't update that then.
But is the percentage correct or are the dollar amounts correct?
Yeah. Let me get back to you now. Do a quick calculation. Just to double check my numbers.
Uh, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Troy. Any other questions for Troy?
This does Pam Casillas. I don't really have a question, but I did want to make a couple of comments. First of all, I had the opportunity. I walk my dog every day at Cedar Lake Farms and so I happened to walk every day while they were doing the the outdoor education stuff. And and I have to say, you know, your your staff does a really great job with that. The kids are pretty wired, but they're very engaged in the in the activities and it was a it was a busy day, not the nicest weather, but you know, everybody made the best of it. And then secondly, I also attended the Shell Lakes seminar. So kudos to Melissa. I know she worked hard on that, pulling that together and it was really very informative. I learned a lot more than I knew before about the fact that there has to be this delicate balance of plant life versus people wanting a clear lake with just fish. So that was, it was a really a great seminar to attend. So thank you for both of those.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you, Commissioner Casillas.
Okay, um, next up we have Vanessa with your updates.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to hit on a few quickly and Ryan and Melissa will get into the deeper weeds on things. So obviously, as Troy mentioned, we did the outdoor education days this year. That was a great success and staff all attended that as well, helping to do some of that educating. We also had the Children's Water Festival that week. They have just under 2,000 kids, but that's all on one day. That's all seven metro counties all get together and partner on that event. That was very successful this year as well. You know, a few, a couple of big things that we're working on right now. We are working on the budget and work plan for next year. Now we're having to really hammer out some of those fine details because obviously November, we're going to bring you the final budget. Numbers for 2024. Right now, I don't see too many changes, if any, to the preliminary levy as it stands. So that's good. It's just making sure that we have all of our i's dotted and t's crossed, especially since we're moving into our planning update phase for the next couple of years. So just making sure that we're getting all of the preliminary data and studies done in order to inform that plan and keep moving in forward on that process. In addition, we're also working a little bit on updating our groundwater rate study. So the groundwater rate study we have is well over, well, it was last updated very briefly in about 2014, very briefly, but it's an extremely old study. I think it was early 2000s when it was written. And so our groundwater rates that it's usually being charged to development and also separate than the erosion sediment control, the standard building permits. This is for kind of larger developments and large water users. That was, it's no longer sufficient to meet the current demand of workload that we spend going into it. So we're working on updating that to make sure that what we're bringing in balances what we're spending and we're not going under budget in that area. And also to help with some of the groundwater planning. So that's just a little other project that we're working on. And then I do want to say, really great to hear Troy about Adam and his family winning that 11 county award. That's really wonderful. It's great to hear. We'll keep close tabs on whether or not he wins state, but the fact that he won this regional award, I mean, that's no surprise to us, obviously, because we all, you know, got to meet him and see the work that he's doing and it's quite impressive. So definitely congratulations to him and your staff for helping him out with that, too. So thank you for that. And those are kind of my big, big key things for for now. Madam Chair, if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Sorry, I was muted. Any questions for Vanessa? Okay, hearing none, I think we can move on to Ryan with program updates.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. First off, we're saying we've got a cold running through our house right now, so bear with me a little bit. I've got a bit of a cough, so I might be muting and unmuting a little bit. So just a few updates. The biggest one being our CIP that we are looking to start construction this fall/winter time period. We did get an acceptable bid from Vite and Company. And for anybody that was around when we started phase one of these projects, so now we're on phase six. Phase one was actually three projects within that phase, a two-stream bank and a ravine. That was actually completed by Vite. So they have an understanding of, you know, this type of work. If I remember correctly, they do have a side grip vibratory hammer, which was one of the things we had in our specs that was not required, but highly encouraged, I guess. And that's to drive in those vertical logs into the crack. So that that vibratory hammer does a nice job with that. We've always run into issues with depth on those. And so the the hammer, instead of pounding on it with the end of the excavator bucket. This is a little bit easier on the the logs and they're less susceptible to breaking them. So that was exciting. The board did authorize then entering into a contract with them. That was last Tuesday. And so now at this point, we're just making sure that they fulfill all the contract requirements that we have, the bonds, all the various things that are outlined in our specs. And assuming all that happens, we had set the project up to be anytime after November 1st to actually start construction. I have not been able to get a hold of the actual project manager yet. I've reached out a couple of times and haven't heard back, so I'm guessing he might be a little busy. But our consultant, Interfluv, actually is working on a job with them right now. And through the grapevine, they kind of said they were thinking maybe that they wouldn't start construction till like late December or even early January, which only gives them about a two-month window to complete construction. So we're going to talk about that a little bit, but ultimately, if they believe that they can get it done within that timeframe, they have the ability to do that. There was also an amendment for Interfluv to have them help us with more construction observation hours. That was also approved by the board last Tuesday. So that project is kind of at an exciting time where we've done all this work to get it to this point. And now hopefully we just, construction goes smoothly and we can get it in the ground. We also work with our highway department. They help out with inspections on it as well. So I've been in touch with the highway department manager about lining up who out of his staff is going to be helping us this time around. Pika Creek CIP. So not much of an update on this one. We did have an amendment for SRF as well for that to to add construction observation hours. And we also wanted a more detailed survey that that had already occurred. And so we we had that amendment approved also by the board last Tuesday. So a lot of exciting things with those two projects and more to come. Hopefully, maybe by the the next meeting, I've got more detailed information or maybe they've even started construction on the Xanadu project. I'll wrap up with just saying our fish survey is complete. But if you notice, our agenda is a little bigger today and we decided to, we'll share that with everybody at the November meeting. So with the tax docket revisions, that can take a little bit of time if there's questions. And so just wanted to let you know that is complete. The consultant did a fantastic job on the report. It's a, it's really neat to see all the graphs and and information and they kind of outlined what the, you know, next steps that we should be looking at are. So I'll be happy to share that with everybody in November. Oh, sorry, one more thing. Every time we work with MPCA on a grant, they have what's called a check-in meeting. And that's at any point during the the grant. Usually it's a little bit later because they want to see projects. That is actually occurring in a couple of weeks. We're going to, I'll be meeting with our representative from MPCA and kind of taking her on a little bit of a mini tour of some of the projects that have been completed. So she can kind of see. So that, just want to let everyone know that was upcoming as well. And with that, I'll say any questions?
Troy, questions for Ryan? All right, hearing none. Melissa, you are up.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm going to share my screen here. Oh, sorry, Ryan, I have to, yeah. Sorry, I moved a couple of things around here. Okay, can everybody see that dump truck? Perfect. Okay, so this is an update on the Eagle Scout project. So remember Nick Stang several months ago brought his ideas on how to improve water quality at the Mill Pond. And the commission approved up to $600 to help him with native planting along with shirling. He got another donation from someone else on some rock and some looks like gravel there, but just showing you some pictures. So on the weekend of September 15th, Nick and his dad got to it. I dropped off plants and erosion control blanket and some mulch that came to $589, so just under the 600 that you approved. And I think they did a really nice job. It looks really nice. This is it with the erosion control fabric. And then that's the finished project. It is moved up a little bit higher on the slope than what we originally talked about. But water levels, you know, for, you know, are really down right now. So I'm thinking once the water level goes back to its normal level, it'll be a little bit closer to at least the water-loving plants. So I'll be checking in with him on how that's, how that's doing. But this is the latest he sent me. He still has to put some kind of protection around it, some kind of fencing around it to keep people out and keep them protected. But just wanted to update you on that. That's all in. I did also provide him with a planting plan and maintenance plan to make sure that everything is taken care of and everything survives. So. Next is just a quick update on the Shallow Lake Seminar that was held on October 11th. And Commissioner Casillas was there, which was really nice to see. I know that there was a couple of other other Cedar Lake people that I didn't know, but I figured out where they were from because they had asked a couple of questions. We were hoping for 300. That's why we did a direct mailing to four different lakes. We had 66 people sign up. We had 44 attend and three people showed up without an RSVP. So something happened where there's, you know, handful of people didn't make it, but we had some pretty good comments back at the end from people. So this is Joel Bischof. He started off from bar engineering. He started off giving kind of the shallow lake basics and shallow lake ecology, which I thought he did an excellent job. And then Steve McComas gave his talk on lake management strategies. So I'm just going to show you some of the results that Shelby tracked for me and I thought they were pretty positive. So she put together just a short number of questions. You know, their knowledge of lake ecosystems increased, pretty good response on that. Knowledge of lake management increased. Only one person disagreed. The biggest lake concern, as you can see, a lot of people said water level, which really wasn't one of the strong points of the talk, but it had, you know, Joe did touch on it a little bit. And then kind of wondering how they learned about it. It's interesting that only one person checked the mailing, so even though we sent out quite a few mailers. But I think the biggest takeaway was really important. Joe had really stressed that, you know, to have a clear water state, you need plants, you need aquatic plants in the lake. And so a lot of people did get that takeaway that the plants are good. We need the plants. And another person did get the takeaway that it's a really long process to change from one state to another. And, you know, especially for cedar, we've been working on that for a long time. It's just going to be one of those lakes that takes a long time, a long process. So I think we got some really positive feedback at the end of that. And next. Next update is, I just wanted to show you. So next year, you know, we're going to be starting our watershed plan update. This year, the Vermilion is, and I'm involved with that. And one of the most important parts of that is the public input process. So kind of the first stage of that. And Vermilion actually this year hired a consultant to put together a public engagement plan, which is going to be really helpful for us to have those tips when we start this. But one tool they're going to use that I just want to show you really quickly, because I think it's really cool, is called Social Pinpoint. And, oh, there goes, it popped up. So what this is, is it's just an interactive tool. So you get a link and you go online and they have kind of a little explanation here, but and they have just kind of three choices that people can zoom into the map and make a point where they think there's, they think there's an area of concern here or they like this particular project or they think there's some kind of an opportunity there. So I'll just go into this and show you how it works, but people can zoom in. And all these yellow stars are, the Vermilion put all their projects on this map from their current watershed plan. That's all projects that have been completed since 2016. So people can zoom in and then they can click on. So people can zoom in and then they can click on the add comment and they can pick whatever those options are. And they can actually type in more text too, so. Um I've never seen this before, I just thought it was really cool and I thought it might be something that we might. You know, consider for our public engagement process, but. Just wanted to share that with you really quick. Um next is so a quick Cedar Lake update. Um tomorrow, I'm meeting with the Lake Improvement District Board. Uh the DNR and PLM, our treatment vendor, to discuss the twenty twenty-four treatment plant for Cedar. Um I completed the draft survey. Um for Cedar for the year, I do get that one done every year because the lid asks for it. And we work with the DNR every year to figure out a treatment plan for Cedar. Um it's just a tricky lake that we have to kind of change things up a lot um. And so, since we used a another new chemical this year, which was something we used a couple of years ago. Um you know, we really pay really close attention to um the results of the native plant response on that, so. Some more to come and what that treatment plan will be for twenty twenty-four. Um this week, I'll be attending Wednesday through Friday, I'll be attending the Midwest Climate Resiliency Conference in Duluth. Um I'm going to that mainly to see what can we learn? That we might be able to put into the next plan update, starting next year. Um I think it's really something that we have to consider with all the climate um extremes that we've saw, so. Hopefully, I'll learn some good information I can share with you um at the next meeting. And then just a quick update on our logo and branding stuff, we're still working on that. Um we did kind of all agree on a logo, but we're gonna wait till next month to share that with all the branding materials that we're developing. Also, so. That's all I have, and I'll stand for any questions if anyone has any.
You're such a tease, I want to see the new logo. Excited to throw that in at the end.
He sent us letterhead today we got to look at.
Oh, you should share it. You should put it up on the screen.
We're terrible.
Um I'll I'll just add, I went to the Shallow Lake Seminar too and caught most of it and it was very well done, I thought. It it is unfortunate that more people weren't able to learn from that, because I thought it really did give good basic information. And you know, would help folks understand just the things that we battle with down here, southern Minnesota, so. Um other questions, comments from Melissa?
Thank you, uh um Madam Chair, you know, shallow lakes are challenging. And so we will, you know, continue to have these, you know, occasionally just to kind of help. Find new opportunities to way to help enable our shallow lake residents to just better manage their lakes, right? Um and if we can bring those like learning and engagement opportunities and those knowledge building opportunities to them. Um and empowers them, you know, to be um. Probably like happier with their lake, more comfortable with their lake, help them lead themselves to a little bit to. Um you know, those are always things that we're looking at, so we're always looking to for other topics and things to talk about. Uh Joe and Steve did great uh with our two initial topics, but you know, uh based upon the needs or desires of our residents. We can certainly choose other topics in the future and bring that forward for um. People to learn from it, the weather was very nice, it always changes things when the weather's nice, so. Um especially this time of year, so, yeah. But the the turnout was actually pretty good for a standard workshop, that's a pretty, pretty good dump, pretty good turnout. We just always want to aim really, really high ourselves, because that's just who we are.
Okay, um moving on, One Watership, One Plan Updates, we had a meeting last week, a policy committee meeting. And we looked at the implementation table and talked about that. And then talked more about the um organizational plan that it sounds like we will not take part in at that point. So um I I guess we just move forward and kind of help out with the One Watership, One Plan part. And then I think La Sure and Rice, um the Scott SWCD isn't included in that group, will be involved. Um but the WMO won't play a big part in that, so I don't know. Um Melissa, if you have anything to add, or Vanessa, but uh not too much of an update, I have the implementation table handy if folks do want to see it. Um and what's gonna go in that, but.
The only thing I do have to add is that the draft plan is now available for kind of an internal review, yeah, so.
Yes, that's right, thanks for mentioning that, Melissa. Okay, if we have no questions on that, um we can move on to new business, and it looks like the tax docket is up first. It looks like Ryan, you're ready to go with that.
Yeah, Chair Commissioners, so you get to listen to me talk for a little bit here. Uh so first item, uh and I want to um bring this up, so it is an action item, however. If there are items that um we want to rework or reword. Uh we can certainly, we have the ability, while we're bringing it to you in October. Is we'd have the ability to make any changes, update anything, you know, WPC members want to see in the docket. Um over the next month and then bring it back to you in November, so I just want to make sure that's very clear. That if there are things that you want to see changed, um we have the time uh to do that for you, so. Um with that, I'll jump right in. So I'm not gonna go through like every, every change that we are proposing. Uh if you, if you read through the packet, you can see that there's a lot of um changes. I wouldn't say a lot are substantial, but the there are some, and that's what I want to kind of focus our attention on, was the more substantial changes. And then um answering the questions that you have, um and then go from there, see what you think. So uh first item is the separating of the application from the contract, so. What I'll do is I'll walk us through the process that we currently have, and then what is being proposed that's different from that process. So currently, when a landowner has interest um in working with us. Uh we take all their information, we log their requests, and then one of the conservationists starts working with that landowner. And if um their interests align with practices that we offer through our cost share. And the conservationist continues to work with them um. Trying to get that financial assistance for them. And in the end, um they've got a decent amount of time stuck into it, depending on what the project is, right? If it's a rain garden, probably not a whole lot of time is is in that project um to start. But if it's a, you know, a water and sediment control basin. Especially depending on, you know, what the Job Approval Authority is on it. It can take, you know, quite a bit of time, Troy's giving us the example of the rain gardens might be, you know, a a couple hours. But maybe a water and sediment basin uh could take up to eighty hours. And so from the start to when they actually sign the contract, our current processes, they don't sign anything until they get to the point. Of requesting financial assistance. In their application that we have, um they sign the application and that application either goes to. The SWCD Board for approval, or if it's a screening committee application and actually goes, gets a recommendation at their board. And then you'll see those at the WPC meetings. Um and then we've got the delegation of approval authorities, so if it's under fifty thousand, Vanessa signs those. Um and then fifty to a hundred, uh we've got um another, uh we got Brad Davis that can sign it. And if it's over a hundred thousand, then it has to go to our board uh for approval. Um so that's our our current process, so once the application is reviewed, if it's approved, then that application becomes the contract. So they're one in the same, the application and the contract are the same document, we're just using different terminology. Before and after it gets reviewed for approval. So getting to the point of what we're proposing, so now the. And Troy's been doing this for a year, so uh that's why you don't actually see this change in the docket. Because in our appendix, it says that we reserve, the WMO reserves the right to not do the application um versus the contract. So we were giving it a year to see how everything went with it, um it sounds like from talking to Troy, things are going well. Um one of the bigger drivers is um the landowners uh continuing on with the project and remaining interested. All the way to the point um of signing the contract itself, so the thought here is that. Earlier on in the process, if they sign an application, there's um. A little bit more investment on their part, that they're actually signing something earlier. That's saying they're interested in this project and they want to continue to work with staff on it. And then if it gets to the point of the financial assistance, the contract, then they've at least signed something. Um prior to the actual contract, saying they want to pursue this. Um and so the thought was that they're more invested, they're they're more willing to maybe try to get to the contract versus. They don't sign anything and all of a sudden, right when it comes time to um do the contract. They um then they might back out, right, that they they haven't really signed anything to that point. Um they don't necessarily know what the commitment is, and so part of this is just kind of showing them, when you sign that application. You know, here's a an estimate of all the time that's gonna be spent by staff getting to the point of the contract. And so it's sort of opening their eyes a little bit, that you know, if you're not really interested, here's, here's kind of the point where you should maybe think about backing out. Or if they're waffling, so it's, it's really just so staff isn't spending as much time on projects. That ultimately never get in the ground, that the landlord is back out at the end. Um so that's the difference between what we're currently doing to what we're proposing to do. And this topic we've talked about quite a bit, so I also want to make sure uh we had a meeting this morning. Vanessa and Troy, if you have anything to chime in on that particular topic, I think now would be a good time.
Yeah, I um thank you, Ryan, that's a great intro, so again, um this is a larger process of the policy. Uh change uh update, so we do want to bring this one to you with a little bit more conversation upfront. Uh because it is a little bit of a larger change for how we operate the program, so that's why we're going into a little bit more depth on this one. Um you know, basically now having an application upfront, uh followed by a contract at the end is certainly different. Than them signing everything at the end. Um Troy also pointed out that for some of the smaller projects like a rain garden. Uh sometimes when they get to the end and they see the contract and all this paperwork, that can also uh be a little off-putting too. Where it's kind of feels rushed, where all of a sudden they're now they're being given this rather large contract and everything, whereas if they can walk them into it slowly. With the application and then the contract, it's more comfortable for them. So there are a couple of good drivers uh for the short projects, it's kind of softens them into the process um. Hopefully enabling more projects to make it through the process, and then for the much larger projects. Um it helps kind of secure the process overall, because they're putting a lot of effort and time into this. Um with the application, you know, there are still going to be at that point knowing kind of what process, what project they're signing up for, what type of practice. And generally what what the cost share opportunities are gonna be available to them. Um but some of the hardcore details, like the final planning, design and technical details. Would be worked out after the application, but before the contract. Um but Troy, maybe you could speak a little bit about some of the uh positives things you've seen out of testing this for a year. Um and then any other benefits that you've seen from doing it this way? And why you really uh were inspired to kind of try to make this change to the program?
I think um some of that is was covered uh very well by Ryan and you Vanessa, um we we didn't. Fully implement the, the, I I call it a separate application, or at least the application is decoupled from the contract. We didn't implement it in its full intention this past year, just because we did want to get some experience with a separate form. So what we did was we created a a um. It was a request for uh assistance through the technical assistance and cost share program, so it didn't like. Uh officially serve as their application, but it was something that they did sign requesting that they wanted to some help with the project. Um and that um if, if they were to proceed with the project. They'd have to complete an official application, which as Ryan mentioned, is the contract uh before doing anything on the ground. And it also did, as Ryan mentioned, a provide a space that gave us as staff opportunity to let them know what we anticipate. Our investment of time is gonna be into it, just so that at least a little bit of a cue there that this. That this uh amount of service they're receiving does have value. And like Ryan mentioned, it can be upwards of eighty eighty hours, and you know, that's several thousand dollars worth of investment of time. Uh that, you know, hopefully they will take that still lightly if they would have. Um so what we found is we we used that, we're able to use that application for assistance uh form. And as the queue that put them in what we call a batching ranking uh list. That is, we do uh batch all these applications we receive. And then periodically we get together and decide, you know, which ones are eligible, which ones should go forward, and if the ones that do go forward. Uh what is the cost share source of, we have probably anywhere from a half a dozen or more potential ways to fund any given project. Um so we unofficially used that form as um kind of the entry into the the process of doing. Uh what we found basically was that the the form itself wasn't an impediment. It didn't increase the amount of uh effort on staff part, but it did provide an opportunity to discuss. The what comes next aspect of the program. So overall, even though it didn't serve as an official separate application form, we were able to test it. There wasn't any um, let's say unintended consequences of having another form in our system. We've actually used to have a very similar form uh back, you know, probably over ten years ago. It was called a just the technical. Operator, Cooperative Assistance Form. Ryan, you might remember it from back in the day, but um it was kind of a resurrection of that. Anyway, um. The other thing that uh was more recent that makes it feel uh kind of a better time to move forward with this. Was that borrowers updated their policies, uh they no longer require using their contract and they don't require them to approve. The use of whatever cost share agreement or contract you have. So they're basically evening it up to each local, you know, governments or watershed to decide what forms that they. Uh would like to use for for that purpose. There are some minimum requirements, though, there's probably a half a dozen or so requirements, according to the Grants Administration. Which are something we could easily do. So we're not locked into, in other words, we're not locked by state. Policy into a. Contract that also is an application. Um so. I'll leave it there and maybe just. Yeah, just looking at some other notes I have, wanting to share, but like I said, Ryan, that's a pretty well.
Thank you, Troy, so once again, Madam Chair Commissioners, just a couple of key points from the the WPC's perspective. Uh we obviously, we pay for the time of the SWCD staff. Uh regardless of whether or not the project makes it to the contract or not. So if some of these are going to secure more contracts, that's great. Uh and that's obviously a win on our situation, now whether they do or not, just the technical assistance often provides a benefit either way, so. The fact that we pay for the time, you know, ahead of time uh for the design implementation and meeting with the residents. Uh you know, I think that's that's time still well paid for, but obviously if we can secure more contracts and it increases that percentage, that's certainly a win on our end. But at the same time, we don't want to be approving things that may not be complete. So we don't want to necessarily just approve an application without having all of the details worked out. Uh uh or finalized, so we need to know when we're going to approve, because the ones that we're approving are. Kind of following the top twenty-five percent, right, the ones that need to go to the steering committee, they're either high risk, the really challenging ones. The ones that do really require a deeper dive, or maybe really unique uh or innovative. So when they come to us here at the WPC, for you folks to review. Uh, they really should be right about at that contract point, because we don't want to see an application and then have something get reworked. And then have it changed before it goes to contract. So when it comes to you at the WPC, even with a new process. It will still be at the contract phase, and that is because the ones that you receive to review. Are those that are more challenging, more difficult, more expensive, uh, innovative and unique. Uh, and those are more likely to have some changes between the application and the contract. Uh, so. That's the only other piece that I would add, from your perspective, how you might see this. Um, the things that might be important for the commissioners to think about uh, on, on this change to the docket.
Is that um, this application form, I would still consider optional. The reason being is that for folks that have dealt with their programs, they know exactly what they want very early in the process. We might go straight to the contract signature right away. Uh, so that seems to be the natural course, the actual will still have that opportunity. Uh, but in most cases, for especially for. For the new folks that we're working with, I think the application will be much uh, smoother process.
Madam Chair Commissioners, Vanessa and Troy, thank you uh, both for uh, chiming in. So that, that's a lot of information for that first item. I guess I'm just going to pause and see if there's any questions that anybody has at this point. Okay, so we'll move on to the next item. This one's kind of exciting, um, I think. So. The second bullet item is, we are looking to potentially offer free conservation practices instead of. Um, projects where. Excuse me, um, projects that are. The way I'm envisioning this is they're going to be on the smaller and small contracts for cost share. Um, so we're really just talking about cover crops in native grass plantings. Where the soil and water would have the ability to actually implement the conservation for the landowner. Instead of them applying for cost share. Um, and so. One barrier for landowners could be the amount of paperwork. They just don't necessarily want to deal with. The contracts and then um, buying the seed, holding the receipts, um, and, and submitting them. Going through all that process, the, the time and effort that it takes to do it. However, they have interest in the project. And we're hoping that maybe what we can do is some of these landowners that might not go forward. With it because of the, the time, that maybe by offering them that it's free. Instead of us paying for it through the cost share route. We'd be paying the soil and water to, to implement the, the conservation practice on behalf of the landowners. All the paperwork, um, in terms of, you know, benefits. Um, would still be in the files, so maps and everything else would be there. Minus that contract, um, that, that they would sign, so they'd still have to do. Um, you know, operation and maintenance, so there's, they still have to maintain the practices, um, but they could get it implemented for free. Um, and like, once again, yeah, we're envisioning this as more of our smaller projects and obviously. Very specific practices to where we have the ability to, to actually do the work. We, we don't have a dozer and a, a skill loader to start putting in, you know, waterways and water in sediment basins, but um. Uh, but for plantings, um, we do have that. Or the soil and water would have that equipment. Um, so any questions with that one?
Would they still have to sign a contract for operation and maintenance?
Madam Chair, great question. Yes, they still have to sign that they're going to maintain the project. Yep, so that's still holding them liable um, for, because there is an investment in the project still.
And I'm, I'm sorry if I missed this, do we have a full list somewhere of what we're planning on doing? I see the couple of examples there, but, oh, it's probably in the. The docket itself further down, right?
Madam Chair, are you saying which practices we would offer this for?
Yes.
Yep, so let me scroll. Troy. Can point it out, uh, it's the install credit. And so it's, um. There's a list of what they could do, um. But it's not, it's not necessarily limited to that, if all of a sudden some, a one-off came in and they would have the ability, but this is typically. What it's going to be, the cover crops, the native prairie seed. Um, and then it looks like trees and shrubs and lab tests too, they can do for the landowners.
Okay, nice.
Yep. So yeah, it's kind of a neat opportunity, I think. We're, we're always trying to adapt and. Figure out what are barriers, and if we can improve those to get more participation in the program.
A, a similar example that I had years ago was, obviously I had a, a larger clean water fund grant from Bowser. Uh, and then subcontracted through Metro Blooms, uh, when they were still little and small to go out and. Uh, you know. Manage the project and, and put it in for the homeowner. And then um, pretty much, you know, do all the design and installation and then, um. Submit the paperwork and then, um, you know, work on the financial part, pretty much all on the behalf of the homeowner and. The homeowner just signs the operation and maintenance plan and um, approves the design. Uh, for those homeowners that just are not up, up to that, um. And it, it kind of just cuts to the chase where the SWCD is willing and able to do these types of activities themselves. Um, so instead of the homeowner having to go through all of that, we're pretty much saying the SWCD is willing to offer all of these services and activities. Uh, themselves, um, so the one security is that we do know that the person doing them is going to be the SWCD staff. This is not allow anybody to come in and do. Free uh, cost share practices. It is specific to SWCD staff for practices that have been already pre-approved. And knowledge and experience, but it's hopefully making it. Even easier uh, for those that really don't have the time, inclination, knowledge. Free Tuesday nights, I don't know, to, to do it themselves. Looks like Troy and Melissa have their hands up, so I don't know if they wanted to jump in and add something.
I just had a question, I didn't read through the docket. As it went into the packet, but can somebody explain how, how is this, how is it free, like? Who's? Is the homeowner paying anything, or how?
So, so, oh, actually.
That's act- actually what I was going to address, so. Um, free might be a little loose on that, what, what we're maybe envisioning. Is that we would. Create a, a basically a quote for how much that work would cost. And then that is what we build for the landlord, but, but rather than give it totally free. We would just deduct out of that the amount that they would otherwise receive. In cost share, so for example, if it costs five hundred dollars to install an acre of prairie. And our. Cost share policy provided five hundred, then it would be. But if it costs seven hundred, because we have to maybe do a two-time spraying, that's a little bit more of a quote. Site, and it costs seven hundred. Then the credit would be the five hundred, and they would still be liable to pay seven hundred. So it either, it would be the, they would receive the less of two, either the, the cost share amount itself. Or the difference between the, um, yeah. The less you have, either the cost of the installation. Or the, the amount that's available through the cost share, normal cost share program.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Pence, I have a question, um, maybe Ryan can address it also. I understand kind of where they're going, uh, but I have a couple of reservations. One is, have. I'm assuming the projects would still go through the same approval process that we're doing now, regardless of whether there's any cost share involved or not. Also, I wonder if you thought about, is there. This is supposed to be for smaller projects, have you defined what smaller projects would mean? In other words, is there a max amount? Uh, for a project that could qualify for this process versus a, you know, contract with, with owners participating in cross-share? And so I kind of want to get a little more better sense for you. I'm a little concerned that somebody might come in with a, with a large project. That from a budgetary standpoint might become a problem, especially if they don't have any skin in the game, so to speak. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pence, yeah, yes, so, great question. Um, so the, the types of projects that we're. Trying to go for, uh, there are, um. There are some maximums, like for cover crop, there's a, a max that it can go to. Um, for any sort of uh, more or less incentive um, to do the work. Um, native prairie plantings, yeah, they can get a little bit uh, bigger. Um, but it kind of like what Troy's saying, that there would be. Um, an amount that they still have to contribute then to the project, you know, it's going to get capped, I guess, with the cost share. In terms of, you know, what, what the SWCD is providing. Um, and then they would be there for the remaining portion. Um, and yes, they do still go through the same process. You know, it's just, it's trying to eliminate the back and forth, I guess, with uh, funds. The, with a, with a contractor. Did that, did that answer your questions, Commissioner Pence?
Yes, uh, Ryan, thank you very much, appreciate the updates on that clarification.
You're welcome.
One thing we could do, we could offer is, we could come back in November. Um, and just kind of lay out what those limits are, because I mean, I agree, it sounds a little soft right now. Um, so clarifying what, what the definition is of small project or limits. On those type of projects, just come back to you with that in November, um, just for a little bit added clarification.
Vanessa, thank you. I would really appreciate that if we'd be willing to do that, come back in November for that, thank you.
Absolutely.
I think I could support the motion i- if, along, as long as we had some more definition on that.
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Pence, so I just want to reiterate too that we, this is very much an open discussion, so. We don't have to actually approve, um, you know, the docket as is today. Uh, so I like the back and forth, and if you, if you've got revisions that you want to see in here. Um, let us know, because that's, that's why we're bringing it up this early, so we can. Revise it, how the WPC envisions this, and we can come back to you in November, exactly like we're going to do with this one. Okay. Uh, anything else with this one? All right, so this one I would say is. The, between the application and contract, uh, splitting it out, this would be one of the bigger items here, so. Um, also, just so the, the commissioners all know, there are small tweaks that happen, so if it were to. If it were to get approved, it sounds like today we won't, we're going to bring it back in November. Um, but we do minor stuff, so like this, this graph just got updated today, so. Um, I, I'm going to speak on what it all means, but just know that next, uh, in November, when I bring it back, it's going to look just slightly different than this. Um. So one, uh, you'll notice you see Prior Lake, Spring Lake, Watershed District on top, this is actually um, intended to be countywide. So it's, it wouldn't be just specific to them, this is WMO, Vermillion, Lowerman, Prior Lake, and us. Um, so the. Currently how we have it set up is that there are certain practices. Uh, for instance, wetland restorations, stream bank stabilizations, shoreline projects. That, um, no matter what, they come to the WPC. Doesn't, doesn't matter if they're, um, you know, really high benefits. Or any other factors, they just automatically come to the WPC. Now, we did some digging on this, and feel free for anybody that, um, that remembers this. Uh, Commissioner Pence, you might have a pretty good memory of, of the changes here, and Troy and I were able to talk about kind of the history. So why some of those practices were pulled out, um, one for wetland restorations, uh. This was a while back, but. For anybody that remembers, there was an application process when there was a program called REP available. It was a perpetual um, easement program for wetland restorations. And at the time, the WMO had uh, the ability to add on to the rep amount. So they'd get the funds from this grant, but then the wetland could also then have additional funds, if that's what it took. To get the landowners on board uh, with the project. And so when that was happening, it was, we wanted to see all these, these projects come through the screening committee process. Um, similar with stream bank and shoreline. Um, uh, you know, a stream is going to naturally have erosion. Um, and so one of the factors of why. We were wanting it to come to the WPC is that if it was a stream bank stabilization in the. You know, middle of a, a woods. Um, you know, the stream's just doing what a stream does. It really is not a project that we would want to pursue, uh, offering financial assistance on. Um, same thing with shoreline, same, same thing would apply, if there's really nothing, um. That it's affecting, uh, that it might not necessarily be a, a project that, um, that we'd want to fund. Now, I. Fast forward to today, and I think those projects are getting vetted out before they would even. Uh, come through and you'd see them, um, at a WPC meeting. You know, if, if a stream's just being a stream. And that, that project, we could offer them technical assistance, but they're, they're just not going to get to the point of a project. And wanting to pursue cost share. You know, staff would, staff would, um, not necessarily support that, that project. So, um, what we're thinking is that, uh, we wanted to look at just basing. The projects off of their, um, environmental benefits. Uh, another key factor here too is that, um, when some of these changes were being made, we weren't really calculating runoff. Cost benefit, and so some projects are geared more towards runoff, like a native grass planting. Um, yeah, a wetland restoration, you know, those are, those are, the benefit is really the runoff, not necessarily the, the sediment. Um, reduction, and so. Um, long story trying to make short here. What we're looking at is, is eliminating that a certain type of practice automatically comes to the WPC. We're looking at basing it off of their benefits. If it's a, if it's a high benefiting project. It's in the upper threshold of, of what, um, we've kind of calculated here, and you can see the approval thresholds. If it's below those, you know, it's below the hundred and seventy dollars a ton per year of sediment. Um, then it's a, it's a very high benefiting project. Um, and that way, you wouldn't have that extra necessarily layer to it. Um, same thing with wetlands, you know, if it's under the thousand acre foot of runoff. Um, that it's a good project and, um, that we wouldn't have that, that extra step with it. Um, what's going to get updated here is. Where you see in the middle, it says type one practices, and it lists all the practices, and then type three. Um, what we updated is that there's a whole slew of other practices that are, um. That aren't listed, but that is also part of this process too, and so Troy updated this, and so. Really, uh, uh, every practice that we have in the docket is either falling between a type one, a type two, or a type three. Practice, um, and so I just wanted to call that out, just so you kind of, um, see that. Um, and the, the type one practices are where you, you're, um. Some of them don't have, like whole farm planning, they don't have, um, you know, a benefit. That's quantifiable. That's where staff is working with the landowners on developing a plan for their. Their property and all the opportunities that they have. So, I, I wanted to see if there was any more, um. Kind of background, so what I found with the change is there's, it's not necessarily documented in minutes. The change from, you know, projects going to, certain practices going to the screening committee, it was between two thousand thirteen and fourteen. Um, there was just, that change was made, where they came to. Um, there was just, that change was made, where they came to the WPC versus not coming to the WPC, so. I also wanted to see if anyone else remembers more information about that, um, or wants to chime in with, with anything on, on that piece.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Pin. Yeah, I do recall the, sort of the, the essence of that discussion back then. But I honestly don't remember all the details as to how or why we came to that conclusion, but, uh. You know, I think what you, where you're going to make sense, so, um, I guess I would encourage you to proceed forward on that.
Okay. Commissioner Pin, thank you. Um, yeah, and, and that was just based off a memory that when Troy and I were talking about, that there wasn't any sort of, um. I'm, I'm, if we had, if I had to guess, how it came about was. A, um, a meeting where, and if you remember, Commissioner Pin, you would sit in on it, where we'd have two WPC members. And then two members of the SWCD Board, and we'd go through all the changes, and I'm guessing that's where it happened, was that change? And then what we see in the minutes is just the change from how it was to, um, what it is. But it didn't give the context or the, the background. I think that's came from those meetings.
Madam Chair, again, this is Commissioner Pin. Yes, that's correct. I remember sitting through these meetings and. We came to consensus on changes that should be made, and I was representing the planning commission. And then I would report back to the planning commission that I was a participant in that, and I recommend for approval these changes. So, yes, I, I don't remember specifically that particular day, but I do remember the process, and I feel very comfortable. That, uh, we were all in agreement, and then I presented my recommendations back to the WPC.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pin, thank you. Uh, and one other thing to note, you'll notice, uh, we used to have, or I guess currently what we've got is a hundred dollars per ton. Per year of sediment reduction was sort of the threshold. If it's above that, it came to the WPC, if it's below that, um, it was deemed a, you know, a good project, and, and it would be fast track. Um, you know, the one seventy is really due account for inflation, uh, just construction costs. Um, you know, staying at a hundred forever would be difficult, you know, we're just going to, as costs increase for construction. Inevitably, you're just going to have more projects that are going to exceed it, but yet they still might be very good projects, so. Troy went ahead and updated the numbers based on benefits and still trying to capture the, the upper end projects and where that kind of cutoff. Um, was at.
So again, Madam Chair, Commissioner, this is, uh, a larger process change because it, it changes. What defines a project being brought to the WPC for review and recommendation. Uh, and, uh, it's, I think it's an updated change as necessary for the time, um, to bring the right projects to you. Uh, based upon the kind of projects that we're seeing now, uh, but it is a process change. Uh, and it is a definition change for what types of projects you will see and review. Uh, so it is worth a little bit longer conversation and a little bit background information and digging into history as tool. Uh, how we came up with that original process, um. Yeah.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, um, any questions on this one? Melissa, it looks like maybe you got your hand raised.
Yes, thank you. Um. So going back to history, um, from what I remember is we. Had stream banks and wetlands go to the steering committee because stream bank projects were extremely expensive. Um, and we had that one huge landslide, um, and I'm drawing a blank on the property owner's name on Sand Creek. Where we invested that pro- that project ended up being about five hundred thousand dollars to save their home from sliding into Sand Creek. And so, um, that's what I remember from history of why we've decided to take stream bank projects. And wetland projects and bring them to a steering committee, because otherwise we would eat up the budget in no time flat each year, so.
And Chair Commissioners, thank you, Melissa. That, it's, it's great to have all the, the background, and we do have, um, you'll notice in the approval thresholds. Anything over fifty thousand, um, is coming to the WPC, so. If there is something that comes in above that amount, um, regardless of benefit, even it can be the best project a- a- available or out there. Um, it would still have to go through that, that next step, that extra step. Uh, anybody else with questions?
Yes, Ma- Madam Chair, uh, this is Mr. Pin again. Um, yes, I remember that project very, very well, that Melissa, your address, and that was for a, uh, uh, a Dr. Craig was the gentleman's name. He had a, uh, one of the original houses up on a bluff overlooking Sand Creek. And yes, it was a very expensive project, uh, both for the landowner as well as for us in terms of what we contributed. And yes, it appeared on surface that it might have failed. But in reality, um, only partially did it fail, the actual, the project is still. With, you know, doing a good job, there's no threat to that house right now, that bank has been stable now for a number of years. And, uh, so, you know, was it a good project, not a good project? I can't comment on the engineering of it. But, um, we have satisfied that landowner, the house is still fine, and there's been no more, um, erosion or collapsing of that bank, so.
And Chair Commissioners, um. Anything else with this item? Otherwise, I'll move on to the, the last, um, bigger piece of it. Oh, yeah. So, last piece is, uh, much like the WMO Board has delegated authority to approve. Um, contracts to, for staff, so I had mentioned before. That if a project comes in that's over a hundred thousand, uh, it has to go to our, uh, Board for approval. Um, if it's between fifty and a hundred thousand, then it would go to Brad Davis for approval, and if it's under fifty thousand. Uh, that would go to Vanessa to sign, so the Board has delegated that authority to staff, um. To approve those, and so what, uh, what's being proposed is that. The SWCD Board is looking to delegate authority to the district manager. Um, for approval, um, of projects, and so I will scroll up to that one. Um. And Troy, while I'm scrolling, if there's anything you want to add to it. That much like we've got, there's caps, um, so that. Uh, that it's not going to be, you know, um, to a certain, to a certain dollar amount would be what the district manager can approve.
I, I would add to clarify, uh, Ryan, that it does not affect the review, ranking, batching, any of that process, it's just. Who has the ability to sign?
Yes, thank you, Vanessa. Yes, thank you for pointing that out. So yes, it's really just who's signing, so instead of their chair signing the contracts, it would be, uh, the district manager. Um, and it looks like the total financial assistance would have to be less than twenty thousand to do that, otherwise it would still go to the Board. Um, they obviously haven't taken action on this item yet, um, it was brought up at the. Uh, October meeting, but much like the WPC, there's time to approve these changes bef- you know, before the end of the year. So with that, I guess I'll stand for any questions, that, I mean, there are little changes like conservation covers going up from. Two hundred dollars an acre to two hundred and twenty-five, cover crops up from sixty to eighty. We simplified waste management, uh, s- the storage facilities. So we, we really don't get a lot of those projects, and if you notice, it's like several pages of the docket. Um, so those got all simplified. Um, so minor stuff like that is also, um, changing, but we wanted to kind of touch on the, the big items, the kind of the big discussion items. And so I'm, I'm kind of hearing is maybe that if there's any other, um, items that, that come up, um, we can. You know, address those, we, I've got the, the item on the limits of the, um, install credit. We'll have the more parameters on that for the next meeting. Um, if there's anything else, let us know, um, and we can, we can make any adjustments.
So, Madam Chair, Commissioners, at this point then, you would just make a motion to table this until November?
Okay. Um, so, oh, hearing no questions, or maybe one last call for questions? So hearing no additional questions, uh, do we have a motion to table this until November?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Pin. I move that we tabled this item to November meeting.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Verling, I'll second that.
One, thank you, Commissioners, I'll do a roll. Commissioner Weaver?
Aye.
Commissioner Pinz?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
Commissioner Casilius?
Aye.
Commissioner Verling?
Aye.
And Commissioner Phil?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, um, now we can move on to the stream bank, the stream bank stabilization contrasts, uh, contracts, uh, is that you, Ryan?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, yes, uh, so, uh, that's why I said I, you get me for a little bit, so the next couple items are. Are, uh, um, still with me, so.
Yep.
Um. First item, this is a contract, so I want to make note of that, it's already been approved. Um, so if you remember the WPC, and if there are times where construction needs to occur. Um, sooner than the next WPC meeting, then, um, Vanessa can approve the contracts, and so this is just an informational item. That we wanted to bring out. Kind of relevant to our changes that we're proposing, so. Here's a stream bank stabilization project in, uh, Belle Plaine Township, it's on County Ditch Three. Um, where it's got an estimated six point two tons of sediment and six point two pounds of phosphorus annually. Um, eroding and going into the ditch. Um, the erosion's occurring at the downstream end of a, a two seventy-two inch culvert, and you can see. Um, the culvert's in the aerial, uh, view on the fact sheet. You can see him there. Um, and so, this is a project where, um. Uh, the, oh, sorry, the estimated cost of the project is fourteen thousand one hundred and twenty, the proposed amounts are nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-four. From the WMO, and then the landowner contributed four thousand two hundred and thirty-six. Um, and the proposed funding source is the two thousand twenty-one WBIF grant. Um, and the reason that it's here today is kind of what we just talked about, that all stream bank stabilization projects, uh, go through the screening committee. Um, for review and recommendation. Uh, the SWCD did review this one at their September twenty-first, uh, meeting and recommended approval. Um, like I stated before, the, the reason it's informational is that, um, they needed to start construction, so. Uh, sooner than the October WPC meeting, and that is why the project was approved. So I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for Ryan on that one? All right, I think we can move on.
All right, um, Madam Chair, Commissioners, so another project, same situation. Uh, so I won't get into the background of why it's here, but it is already approved, so it's just an informational item. Um, this is another stream bank stabilization, it's in section eleven of Helena Township. Uh, this project is on Sand Creek, um, really good benefits on this one. Uh, if you notice with the cost benefit ratio, so it's thirty-five point seven tons of sediment and, uh, thirty-five point seven pounds of phosphorus, that is getting into Sand Creek. Um. And then we've got the proposed, um, stabilization, which would be. Uh, shaping that bank and then covering with a straw coconut road control blanket, and then doing two rows of, uh, willow or dogwood. Um, stakes, so the live seed or seedlings, um, could be installed. Estimated cost for the project is eighteen thousand six hundred and seventy-five, and the proposed amounts are sixteen thousand eight oh seven from the WMO and one thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight from the landowners. Uh, the proposed funding source is a combination of our two thousand twenty-one WBIF grant and two thousand twenty-three local general funds. Um, the SWCD did recommend approval for this project at their September twenty-first meeting. And I'll stand for any questions.
Right, I don't hear any, I think we can move on.
Keep moving. All right, um, this is a, stop sharing, I gotta share another screen. Uh, this is just to give, uh, anybody that, uh, was unable to attend the, um. Um. Meeting, uh, that, sorry, the, the tour, uh, this is just to kind of give a summary of what that, uh, looks like. You know, I'm trying to get the. Um. The actual sharing of the screen, where it's going to be the. Do you happen to know the key to push for sharing, where it would be the full screen of it?
Down on the bottom?
Yeah, I usually do the lower right-hand corner, there's a, I don't see it on here still.
Yeah, I see it, it's down at the bottom, oh, you got it.
All right, that's a word. All right, so as Troy mentioned in his report, uh, we had twenty-five attendees, uh, at the tour. And it was a mix of the Watershed Plan Commissioners, uh, Watershed Management Organization, uh, Commissioners. Uh, the SWCD Supervisors, Prior Lake Spring Lake District Board of Managers, and then staff from Scott County and the WMO. Uh, SWCD and Prior Lake Spring Lake, and then one thing that was kind of neat this year is the conservation leaders. Were on the tour with us, which we talked about it afterwards, and we think that's a, a good plan, we're going forward is. Is maybe having them on the tour with us, and then even trying to stop at one of their sites, um. Seems to kind of make sense if we're highlighting them to. Actually go look at their, their project, so I think that one might be, um, might be here to stay. Uh, so this is just some photos from the different site visits, so we went to a native prairie planting, we went to, uh, Lion Shoot. Um, we went to another native prairie planting. Um, and then we also went to, on the right. Um, that was, uh, Andy Prupsky from the SWCD, that would be Adam Simon's, uh, property. That, uh, he was the conservation leader that got the award, so we were talking about, uh, the lined, um, or sorry, the grass waterways that he did. Um, and then also a lot of the cover crops, so he's, he's, um, real big into the cover crops. And then I didn't hear any complaints about ending at the, um, Cedar Lake, uh, Shoreline Restoration Project, so that one was pretty neat to have that. And a backdrop, the lake, and, um, that was our last site that we went to. Uh, so Troy put on a nice presentation, and it was about collaboration and sort of working. Um, within the county with all the various different watershed districts and watershed management organizations, all the grant funding. Um, so it was really nicely done, just to kind of, um, share with the group, um, you know, how we collaborate, um. With various aspects, whether it's funding or jurisdictional boundaries. Um, or we even made a change when a project actually falls within one jurisdiction, but, um. Uh, actually flows to another one, so that, that was part of the docket changes from a couple of years ago, so that was a highlight. Then on the right is Adam and, uh, uh, Danielle Simon, uh, they're receiving the Conservation Leaders Award, so. That was kind of the, um, the ending of the night with the award ceremony. Uh, so what was some of the feedback? Uh, I only heard really positive things on the, the, the whole tour itself. I had mentioned before that maybe we're thinking about having the conservation leaders on the tour, and then also stopping at their, uh, site going forward in the future. Um, heard really nice things about the link, so it was well planned out. We weren't really on the bus very long ever driving to a site, and I think the longest was maybe twelve, fifteen minutes between the site. Otherwise, we were getting on and off the bus, and it was five different stops that we had. Um, one thing I did hear though, uh, next year, we will have the transportation be provided by Scott County Services, so. Uh, that was good feedback to hear, we had a private, uh, bus company, but, um, moving forward, we're going to utilize our, um, our own resources with, uh, with that. So with that, um, I'll stand for any questions, if anybody has any.
I'll just add, thanks for the summary, I was bummed I wasn't able to make it this year, so.
Yep.
Good to see that nice turnout and attendance.
And Chair, we were bummed as well, but, uh, there's always next year, right?
Yep, that's right. All right, last up on new business.
All right, um. Let me, we gotta, I gotta do another share, a different, uh, screen share here with Melissa's, uh, video, so first, let me get the. Actual agenda back up, and then we'll do the video.
Oh, I'll just give a quick introduction. Oh, I'll just give a quick introduction, um, while he's working on that. Um, so again, this year, as part of our annual work plan, we um, one of the things that our work plan was to create an educational video for you of one of our programs. Um, so this year I chose the citizen assisted lake monitoring program or the camp program, where we find volunteers on uh, the various lakes and have them um, take lake samples for us, um, all season long. Um, Thole, Commissioner Verling does that for us. Uh, we had to find a new volunteer for Cedar this lake, for Cedar Lake this year, which is actually Megan Darley from the SWCD. Her and her husband moved on to the lake. Um, and Aunt McMahon is um, the same volunteer we've had for many years, a Bob worker. So this video is about six minutes long, so hope you enjoy it.
Uh, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'm gonna uh, put the video up here. If you can't hear vid- uh, the audio or you can't see it, chime in. If I don't hear anything from anybody, I'll assume that it is working. We uh, did this earlier today, so hopefully um, everything still works according to plan.
The Scott Watershed Management Organization participates in the Metropolitan Council's citizen assisted lake monitoring program, or sometimes known as CAMP. CAMP is a partnership between the Metropolitan Council and local organizations such as watershed management organizations, watershed districts, counties, cities, and volunteers to collect and analyze scientifically valid water quality data from lakes in the seven county twin cities metropolitan area. Organizations and residents through their lake associations use the data to make better lake management decisions. Under CAMP, sponsor organizations recruit volunteers to monitor water quality in local lakes. Volunteers are trained on how to collect samples and store them for pickup. The volunteer organizations pick up samples from the volunteers and deliver them to Met Council staff for later analysis. Each volunteer samples from a specific site on a lake every two weeks from mid-April through mid-October. Once a lake is enrolled in the program, Met Council staff help locate the best sampling location on each lake and create a map of that location for the volunteer. Volunteers are encouraged to sample on the same day and time for each sample location if possible. Volunteers take their sampling kit aboard the boat. Included with the kit are a sampling jug, graduated cylinder, chlorophyll hand pump, flask and filters, thermometer, aluminum foil, tweezers, sample vials, labels, cooler with ice packs, a pen or pencil, and a secchi disc. With the equipment in hand, it's time to head to the sample site. Once the volunteer reaches the designated sampling location, the first step is filling out the observation portion of the monitoring form. Volunteers can also use an app they can download onto their phone. General observations include water color, odor of the water, wind conditions, cloud cover, and suitability of recreation, just to name a few. Next, volunteers use a one gallon plastic jug to collect a surface water sample. The volunteer pre-rinses the jug three times with lake water. Then submerges the jug upside down to forearm depth before turning it upright while still submerged to let the jug completely fill and bring it into the boat. After collecting the water sample in the sampling jug, they measure water temperature and record on the form or app. Chlorophyll A samples from the jug will be filtered once back on shore and out of direct sunlight. Next, they measure the secchi transparency depth by lowering the secchi disc into the water on the shaded side of the boat if possible. The disc is lowered until it disappears, then lower a little further and slowly raise until the disc just reappears. The point where it reappears is the secchi transparency depth, which is then determined using the rope attached to the disc with measure marks. Secchi transparency is measured in meters. Once back on shore, the volunteer fills out the sample vial labels with the date the sample was taken. The vials are filled with the collected lake water to be later analyzed for total phosphorus and total caldine nitrogen. A sample is also collected to measure chlorophyll A or the amount of algae in the water. A field filtration apparatus and hand pump are used to filter lake water onto a one point zero micrometer glass fiber filter. Sample water is measured with a two hundred fifty milliliter graduated cylinder and poured into the pump reservoir. By squeezing the handle of the pump, a vacuum is created, pulling the sample water through the filter, leaving the associated suspended planktonic algae attached to the filter. To preserve the samples until they can be delivered to Met Council's laboratory, volunteers store the samples in their freezers. Scott WMO staff picks up frozen samples on a pre-scheduled basis throughout the season to deliver to Met Council for later analysis. After all sampling procedures are completed, the sampling equipment should be rinsed with tap water, air dried, and properly stored to protect them until the next sampling date. Volunteers are a cost-effective way to obtain scientifically valid data and build long-term water quality data sets. This data can help an organization by, first, document whether water quality is improving, degrading, or staying the same over time. Second, by assessing before and after lake water quality conditions in response to watershed best management practices and lake management projects. And third, to evaluate if a lake is meeting state water quality standards for eutrophication. Volunteers become more aware of lake conditions, leading them to understand and support the lake protection and management activities of our organization, and to take action themselves to protect our lakes.
Nice. So how many lakes total do we do?
The WMO pays for four lakes. Um, so we pay for um, s- sampling and analysis of Cedar, McMahon, and Thole. O'Dowd is actually recruited and paid for by the city of Shakopee. But we do get to collect that data, and we use that data also.
Okay. Great. Other questions or comments for Melissa? Okay, hearing none. I think that's it for today. Um, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
There's no football fans here, right?
Is there football going on tonight? I'm not one, so.
This is Commissioner Casilius. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. And do we have a second? I can second, can't I? I'll second.
I will do roll. Thank you, Commissioner Weaver. Uh, Commissioner Weaver?
Hi.
Commissioner Pence?
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius?
Hi.
Commissioner Verling?
Hi.
And Commissioner Phil?
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, I know the docket can be a long one, but it is an important one, and we really appreciate it. I hope you enjoy that lovely fall weather we're actually getting uh, before it turns into winter.
Thank you.